I would like to call to order the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners 10 o'clock meeting, August 24th, 2021. At this time, please silence all electronic devices and mute your microphones. Please stand with me for the invocation and the pledge.
Oh merciful Creator, Your hand is open wide to satisfy the needs of every living creature. Make us thankful for Your loving providence and grant that we remembering the account that we must one day give. May be faithful stewards of Your good gifts. Amen.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
District 2 Commissioner Moore.
Here.
District 3 Commissioner Starkey.
Here.
District 4 Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Here.
District 5 Commissioner Mariano.
Here.
District 2 Chairman Oakley.
Here.
District 1.
District 1.
Oh, District 1 Chairman Oakley, what district did I say?
Yeah, I've got my half of the counties in my district.
You're right.
Okay, thank you. May note that all commissioners are present. Now is the time for public comments. Citizens are given an opportunity to comment on any item coming before the Board and on items to be placed on future Board agendas or other business under their purview. Today's public comment will be handled as follows. First, we will take public comment from those that are here in person. Then we will take public comment from those that have pre-registered for WebEx link and are currently on cue. This format does not waive the request that when you address the Board, comments are not directed personally against a Commissioner or team member, but rather directed to the issues. This provides mutual respect between the Board members and the public. For WebEx and in-person participants, after stating your name and address for the clerk, the timer will be activated and will start a countdown. After two minutes, a beep will sound, letting you know that you have one minute remaining. After your time is up, two beeps will sound and your three minutes have passed and you should close your comments. WebEx participants will be disconnected automatically when their time is up. The following people have signed up to speak in person. Madam Clerk.
I have 10 people have signed up. Would you like me to call them in groups of threes? Or just call them one at a time?
One at a time, or groups of threes, fine.
Okay. So if you're able to, we'll line up in this order. Cheryl Orchard, followed by Charlie C.D. Cole-Habich, and the third one is Noah Denny. If you could line up, if you're able to. Thank you.
State your name and address for the clerk.
My name is Cheryl Orchard. I live at 6719 Manor Beach Road in Newport Ritchie in the Green Key area. I'm here today to ask every one of you to look into the situation that most of the people are going through in that area. The flooding is, and the mudslides, the kids can't even walk to school, they have to have their parents drive them through that water to get to school buses. The potholes from the deterioration of the roads for 27 years, since 1994 when they put the sewers in there, they changed the elevations. Terrible on Manor Beach, Largo Terrace gets flooded, terrible. We had a broken flap, they fixed the flap after 27 years. It closes the water off from the bayou so that when the tide's up, it doesn't flood, the rainwater will be there. But when that flap closes, no water comes through except the rainwater, but it recedes in our street. But the problem is, it goes over the next three streets and all the way down Largo Terrace. It's terrible. It's mud, it's just disgusting over there. I just wish that everyone would just take a day and drive through there, especially when the rains are really bad, and see what people have to live through in that area. It's terrible. And I'd appreciate everybody looking in and talking about it and seeing and getting... This has been going on for years, documentation. Just need the help in there. We're begging you for somebody to just come in and look at what we're going through in there. It's terrible. Your quality of life is just shot in there. And there's many other issues, but the main thing is the water issue. That has to start somewhere. The drainage is terrible in there. The county's been out many times. They didn't want to go through the pipes, they couldn't get through the pipes for particles for... and other debris that's gone in there, and the neighborhood's old. We just need it cleaned up a little bit. That's all. I'm just asking for some help in there. I'd appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good morning.
Name and address for the clerk.
Charlie Corona Deanna Krishal-Habich, 9834 Palmer Drive, Newport Ritchie, Florida. Been dealing with an issue since February of 2020 in Fairway Springs. Ever since commencement of our building in Fairway Springs, the county has always come and take care of the drainage, cleaned our pipes, checked our pipes forever, 40-plus years now. In February of 2020, I met with two members of Public Works who came out, walked all the ponds with me, did a flow check because I felt that they weren't flowing properly. They established that there was proper flow and there was no need to go any further to an engineering report. Fast forward to 2021, met with those two representatives again from Public Works and was told that the county attorney has now decided they're not going to take care of our drains. I needed to request records from Public Works or the Clerk's Court in order to prove that they had acceptance of our drainage system and maintenance agreements, which I did, and I was able to prove. And I have documentation here and I've provided it to two other commissioners on the Board here, that indeed Units 2 and 4 of our subdivision and various other assets in Fairway Springs are owned and maintained by the county. I was told by Public Works again, okay, don't worry about it. If we can't, if it's on your map that you've provided us, we'll come and take care of it. Since then, our HOA in the last seven months has spent over $20,000 to repair one drain in our subdivision, with completion just happening a few weeks ago. Now, that one drain is 100 feet from my house that has an outflow drain. I'm included in the representation, is not. It makes no sense that Units 1, 3, and 5 are not included and Units 2 and 4 are included because that one drain 100 feet from my house could cause mine to back up. So that being said, I've not been able to get anywhere. I've been told that it's in the county attorney's office. I've heard back from one commissioner's office who's been very, very attentive. I've not heard back from the other commissioner's office since June 15th. After numerous, numerous calls, we'd really like to get this taken care of because we're at 54 in Little and we all know what that 54 corridor looks like when it's wet. Those are my comments for today.
Name and address for the clerk.
Noah Denny, 7424 Belvedere Terrace, Newport Ritchie, Florida. I originally planned to come here to talk about climate change, but last night those plans changed. I want to explain my new reason as to why I'm here this morning. Last week, I lost two good friends to motorcycle accidents. I already attended a funeral three days ago for a 28-year-old who was hit while riding their motorcycle. There's another memorial ride for another friend next week who was 50 and was hit while riding their Harley. I thought two in one month was bad enough. It made me and a few of our other motorcycle group members consider keeping or giving up two wheels, but I never expected a third in two weeks. Last night, a motorcycle fatality occurred. This time, it was a road rage incident by a young girl who took the life of the co-leader of our group. He was an amazing friend and a guiding light to many of our members, and she took him from us. I'm tired, I'm drained, I'm torn to shreds from the past two weeks of constant news of who went down and didn't get back up. Even I was not spared from being involved in an accident. Two months ago, I was hit while I was stationary. I can't go into the details on that yet, but I was hit in Pasco. I'm just lucky to be able to stand here and advocate for the families who didn't get their riders back from the hospital. Something is exclusively wrong within Pasco and its surrounding counties as to where it's incredibly dangerous to ride or share the road with other people here. From reckless, probably drunk 20-something-year-olds to snowbirds during the winter, something needs to be done. Something needs to be done soon enough to where I don't have a fourth friend lose their life this month. Honestly, I don't think I'd be able to handle that. I'm not even able to handle the third. My heart hurts, but it hurts even more for the family all of these amazing people have been taken from, their blood family and their bike family as well. Something needs to be done, and unfortunately, I'm not quite sure what. That is all my comments.
Thank you, sir.
The next three signed up are Julia Pauls, Henry Burnt, and Wanda Chasnov. If you're able to line up, please do so.
Good morning, good morning, good morning. My name is Julia Pauls, and I live at 6641 Del Prado Terrace in Newport Ritchie. The reason I'm here today is because of that flooding issue, that god-awful flooding issue we have there. The drain pipe that runs from Manor Beach runs directly beside my house. I love the area that I live in, but when it rains or when it's high tide, I cannot live in that house. There are frogs out there, there are woodstorks coming down in the water, getting fish out of the water that came out of the ocean and killing them in our yard and eating them. There is green muck right there. I bought an $8,000 golf cart to enjoy going down to Green Key Beach, and I haven't been able to drive it. I just want to appeal to you guys and say to you, what if it was you? What if it was your family? What would you do? What would you do? You guys have the power to do something about that, that awful, awful, awful rain and flood and sewage and stuff. The mosquitoes are out there, we can't sit outside. We can't enjoy the property. My husband is a Vietnam-era veteran who just recently retired. We can't even enjoy the property that we bought here in Pasco County. I put a for-sale sign in my yard last night. I'm sad that I have to do that, but I had to do something because this is not fair. We came down here, we moved here to retire. I even run a 501(c)(3) here in Pasco County called the Inversitivism Project, where I'm doing stuff to help guys coming back in and out of prison. I can't even get to work half the time. The ladies are calling me at different intervals from the office. I can't run the business from my house, but I can't get out of my driveway. I've had lug nuts rust on my 2015 Ford Escape, and the Ford company is saying it's from the saltwater. I didn't bring that stuff to the county. I've never come up here and spoke to you guys. I've let Cheryl Orchard and everyone else do it. What I'm saying to you guys is, something has to be done. There are grants out there, there is funding here in Pasco right now, and I know it because of the 501(c)(3), because I work with the county, because I do stuff for the county of Newport Ritchie, I mean of Pasco County. I'm doing stuff to help the community, but I can't help the community if the community is not going to help me back. I need you guys to come over there and do something, not just drive, not just drive out there and see it, because you've already driven. I know you guys have already driven out there and seen it. I know you've heard the complaints. Now it's just time for someone to step up and do something about it. Please, I am truly begging you, please.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello. I live in Veterans Village, 3440 Monte Rio Street. Been there 36 years, been in that neighborhood for 40.
Sir, I'm sorry, you have to state your name and address for the record.
Henry A. Burnt, 3440 Monte Rio Street, Newport Ritchie, 34655, Veterans Village. I moved in there with my father and mother. I've been in there since I was 15. That road only went through to Cream Ranch, and that was it. They opened it up both ways. You can go from Hudson to St. Pete. People drive through our neighborhood crazy. I watch veterans lose their homes because they can't even go to their mailbox. People cannot go to their mailbox, pull their car in and out of their driveway without getting hit, yelled at, screamed at, and it doesn't matter. You can go out there any time of the day, watch. And it's a butt of a joke of every... I call the police, I call everybody. Oh, Seven Springs, we know, 40 years I've been in that neighborhood, nobody has done anything for that neighborhood. Sidewalks are collapsing, the sewer drains are collapsing. We have sidewalks that are gravel. You tore it up and put gravel there. I watched a lady in a wheelchair the other day trying to get over that. It's been like that for two and a half years. Nobody's come out to fix it. You put barricades up over ditches that they deteriorate. The barricade literally rotted away. They still come out and fix the hole. I constantly call it, I'm constantly complaining. I'm not moving out of this neighborhood, something needs to be done. I just spoke to a veteran. He can't even have his kids play in his front yard. He can't even back in, pull in and out of his driveway, and he's right across from a school, a private school, and a VFW where people are doing 45, 50, 60 miles an hour. They hit the bridge at Anclot River twice in the last two years. I can't count how many accidents, people have died on that road, and the police come out. As they're writing the ticket, they almost get hit by the speeder. The county needs to do something for Seven Springs Boulevard, Veterans Village, the roads you're building all around us, brand-new gorgeous neighborhood, but you're not taking care of us. It's not right. I've been in there 40 years, and I'm probably going to be there another 30 before I die. I want somebody to come in my neighborhood, look around, because Trinity, all these other neighborhoods, beautiful, not mine. It's not fair.
Yeah. Forty years I have a leak.
Thank you.
I mean, the floods in the same area, 40 years.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Good morning. My name's Wanda Chasnov. I live at 6608 Status Lane, Newport Ritchie, it's off Green Key Road. I'm here because I would like to represent these people that live off of Green Key Road. I live off Green Key Road, my road's considered a private road. I've had Jack out here, and because I'm considered a private road, I guess I don't get any services. Well, I've had Tanya out there, who's the engineer from Storm Drain. She tells me that it's a $2 million job to do the storm drain there. Because Pasco County don't have the funding, they go in for FEMA and they go in for grants. In the meantime, I got a man that lives next to me that is a veteran, he's a one-legged guy, rides a scooter. When it rains, he can't get out because the motel that they just condemned, all the water comes up, comes across my road, goes back out. The man can never get out to get to the store, to get a pack of cigarettes, anything. Now, it starts at 19. DOT starts here, Newport Ritchie starts here, the county starts here. The yellow line in the middle of Green Key says city, county. I live on county, the motel's on city. The city side of the drain is completely flooded, or clogged, and then on my side of the county, you've got trees and all down from the hurricanes. Y'all got the equipment, this DOT's got the equipment, to come in there and temporarily dig our ditches out where it'll drain, where the cars don't go to attempt to turn around and sink in the mud and have to hire a wrecker to come get them out of the ditch because they tried to turn around because they can't go through the water. Now, I've dealt with it for 15 years. Now, this time it rained, my man next door couldn't even get out to get his medicine, and he had a hernia surgery and couldn't do anything. Now, where do we get the luxury of being a citizen of that area to get some benefits? And you can't tell me with the equipment you got, you can't come in here and do something temporarily to relieve us, to either you get a grant or you get FEMA in here. I told Tanya, I said, "Look." I said, "What if I take pictures?" She said, "Well, we all know about Green Key." I said, "But pictures speak a thousand words when it comes to FEMA or a grant. Sometimes you wait from two to five years for a grant or FEMA. Do we gotta wait that long, even though we're considered a private road, but the other access road makes us flood, not our side? And because nobody wants to clean the ditches out, I watch a Chinese couple that just bought a house on that side of Green Key, of the yellow line. I wish you'd ride by there and look at the mud mess where they trying to fill it in so they can live there. It's nothing but mud, this thick. I can't even walk in my street without bringing mud in my house, and I just redone, new floors painted and everything." Now, I'd really like for our commissioners to listen to us, because y'all can spend all the money on Trinity, but just because we're a flooding zone and on that 19, that you want to develop it for higher cost of living. We still pay taxes and we still own our places there, and we want some help, please.
Thank you for your comments. No, thank you.
So the next three signed up are Tanya Salyer, Gary Roskowski, sorry, and Natasha Lewis.
Hi, I'm Tanya Salyer. I live at 10700 Philly Lane, and I'm speaking on behalf of about 16 of our residents on Philly Lane and in the surrounding area. We live in the Highlands, which is northwest Pasco, near county line. Our community is once again filling up with water. Obviously, this is an ongoing problem with all of the county. When this first started happening in 2019, we asked the county to help us and establish a method of removing the floodwaters. After the 2019 flooding, we were assured that the county would have a pump standing by if this happened again, and I sent an email yesterday with the different assurances. I can go ahead and release all the emails that I've had back and forth with the county if you'd like. At this point, it's not about the roads. Our yards are flooded, and the water is dangerously close to many of our homes, my own included. Another hard rain or two, we will have the water threatening the finished floors of the house. Several others in the Philly Lane and Houston area, which is an adjoining road, have already been flooded. In my research and by speaking with friends I have in similar communities, I've discovered that the county performs similar pumping operations to rid backyards of water. Crane's Roost is one of them, and they get aid, apparently with no questions asked. This happens when Yellow Lake and the surrounding lakes begin to flood into backyards in the Crane's Roost area. This is not on the roads there, it's in just backyard flooding or front yard flooding in some cases. The only difference that seems to be between our community and theirs is that they have more political power than we do. I have friends near Yellow Lake Drive who have told me how and when they contact the county to redeploy pumps ahead of expected rainfall and the trigger point, which I've been informed in our community is 15.5. It's been at 15.5 on the gauges for the last week. This is seemingly because, and this is some of the information that I've heard and some research I've done, that the road is county-maintained in Yellow Lake Drive, where only 200 feet of Philly Lane is county-maintained. That did not stop the county from assuring me that they had a pump standing by. As I said, this is not about the roads themselves. Crane's Roost, Ashwood Drive, Thousand Oaks, as well as others who appear to have political power, have their backyard flooding taken care of while Philly Lane is being neglected. Now, I know there's a watershed study, but it's not going to be finished until 2025. That does absolutely nothing for us. We've been assured that while we're waiting, the county would have an emergency pump standing by. I am wondering why this isn't happening. I'm wondering why I'm not getting my emails answered anymore. We're being neglected while similar developments with our same privately maintained roads are being pumped out, and there's probably about six of them that I know of. So we're asking, at the very least, do what you told us in 2019. Do what you told us when I started reporting this back in late July, early August. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Good morning. My name is Gary Roskowski. I reside at 7605 Sylvan Drive, Hudson Avenue. Before I share what I wanted to talk about, I just wanted to take a minute and pray. Father, I just thank you for this day, oh God, and Lord, I thank you for these men and women that stand before me, that you've placed in positions of authority, and Lord, I just pray that you would just strengthen them, Lord, and just give them wisdom on high, oh God, on how to deal with all these issues that are presented before them. So, Lord, I just ask that your peace would just fill their hearts, and even the people in the audience today, Lord, that your perfect peace, Lord, would just fill our hearts and mind. Because we know, oh God, that we're living in perilous times, oh God, and so we just thank you for your greatness, oh God. I thank you that you're on the throne, oh God, and no matter what happens, Lord, that as a believer in you, Lord, we know that we win. So I just thank you for your mercy and each one of our lives in Jesus' name. Amen. So, one thing I just wanted to ask you, Commissioner Mariano, was the issue on Beacon Woods Drive with those plates. I just wanted to know what's happening with that, because I never see anybody working out there on 19, so it's been about four weeks now, I think, and...
Sir, this is public hearing, so you need to tell us.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Rather than ask, we can't answer you back.
Okay, so on Beacon Woods Drive, there's these plates that have been placed across the road, and of course, we have signs that warn people, but if you've never driven that and you go through there even at night, you're going to be airborne in your car, so I just want to know what's happening with that situation and when it's going to be resolved. Also, regarding the COVID-19, I just wanted to ask you, I know yesterday the FDA approved the Pfizer vaccine, and I know in some states, federal government, they're mandating that people are required to get the vaccine, and I just wanted to know what Pasco County's stance is on that for their employees. And for anyone that's interested, there's so much good information on the website regarding what's going on, particularly nojabforme.info. It's N-O-J-A-B-for-me.info. There's a lot of good information on there for employees that if their employer is forcing them to get the vaccine, what they can do to combat that. So, thank you very much, and God bless you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name is Nastasia Louis. We reside at 6646 Del Prado Lane. This is my roommate, Criseline. She's lived there for two years. I've lived there for two months. I became very proactive in trying to figure out how to reach out to you guys about the flooding. We have pictures, I don't know if you guys want...
Move to receive and file.
Second. Got a motion, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
We also have video footage of basically tadpoles in the area in which we live in. I didn't realize that I moved into a waterfront place until I moved in. It wasn't supposed to be. There's herrings, heron, there's, I guess, fish. So many crickets and bugs, mosquitoes, it's overwhelming, we can't stand outside for very long.
I can't get to work if it's raining too hard. I literally have to call work and tell them, "I'm sorry, it's too flooded." I literally can't get my car out of my driveway with how high the water gets.
I invested in rain boots in order for us to be able to take our trash out, be able to get our mail... be able to get our mail, or just even walk in our front yard. We do like to do some gardening, so had to invest in these so that way my feet didn't sink in. I also do have a photo of me being in the water in these exact boots, where the water goes up to here, halfway up my ankle, actually above my ankle. And so thankful that these don't have holes in them. But, yeah, it's just, it's very overwhelming living there. I've only lived there for two months, and I want to move out. I have a 2021 Subaru, and I've taken it to the Subaru dealership. And they also say that I have saltwater damage to my vehicle from going in and out of the water constantly. I feel like there's no reason for me to even wash my car. I've tried to wash my car, but it just gets dirty every single time I go to just leave the house. Not to mind you, like mopping, like, I mean, who likes to mop three times a day their home? Because there's just dirt from just treading in, going in and out, you know? I mean, that's minor stuff, but, yeah, we can't even get home. There's this gentleman that we brought with us today, Jack, who lives behind us, and he can't take himself to or from, and getting an Uber ride to go anywhere is impossible. Nobody can get back there when it is raining. So if he were to need medication, if he were to need to go somewhere, you know, how would he get there? So I'm here not only for myself, but on behalf of all these people who have to deal with this on a daily basis. And I thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you for your comments.
For allowing us to speak.
And then the last person signed up is John Love.
Hello, my name's John Love. I live at 6707 Sierra Terrace. I'm speaking to all of you this morning, especially Mr. Mariano, that is your district, as well as another district that, the Golden Acres area, that I drive through regularly. My family lives out there. And I see roads being paved and almost a million dollars being spent on a water main project that doesn't really enrich those people's lives. It doesn't really do much for them. We live, as they're saying, literally underwater. It's not necessarily a flooding problem, as it keeps being described as. It's a drainage problem. There is no, the drainage is insufficient, but the roads have depressions in them. So when it rains, the water does not dissipate. It sits all month. I have a depression in front of my house that I have about six to eight inches of water in front of my house for basically every day in the month of June, July, August, okay? I can't take my kids for a walk. I can't take my dog for a walk. I can't get in and out of my house without going through six to eight inches of water, okay? It's destroyed my vehicles. It's cost me thousands of dollars in repairs to my vehicles, and literally has diminished the quality of life. It is a health and safety issue. There's kids playing in this water that has tadpoles in it. That's how long it sits for. There's fish in it. Every time that we have a rainstorm, we end up with six to eight inches of water in these depressions all over. It's a problem that you guys created more than 20 years ago. We've owned this house, and it's always been a problem. It's not something we did. It's an engineering issue that has never been fixed, all right? It needs to be done. It needs to be done sooner than later. It's a health issue. It's a safety issue. There's potholes under the water that are created every time it rains that when you drive through, your car will bottom out if you hit them. And you can't see them. They're underwater. They can't come out and fix them because they're underwater, okay? So they just keep growing, keep growing in size. I destroyed my truck driving through one completely because my whole stabilizing unit was rusted out. I hit a pothole. It snapped. My truck bottomed out. Thankfully, my daughter wasn't in the car with me. I had to have my car towed and had it fixed, thousands of dollars worth of damage, all right? This is an ongoing problem. It has diminished the quality of life for all these people. And again, it is a health and safety issue. This needs to be fixed. This isn't just a cosmetic problem, all right? On top of that, you have a great area with great potential, with Green Key Beach, Robert K. Memorial Park. You can't get to it half the time because Green Key Beach is flooded or full of potholes. There should be a sidewalk and a bike trail running the entire path, streetlights all through the area. We have a huge homeless population because the area is pitch black with no streetlights. They walk down the road all night long. I'm driving home in the middle of the night, which a lot of times I have to call my wife before I can come home and say, "Is the road too flooded for me to get home? Do I have to go to my parents' house and wait out the storm? If I have to get to work sometimes, I have to leave several hours in advance if I know it's high tide and a rainstorm's coming." This isn't the way people should live.
Thank you for your comments.
Thanks, Jack.
Yes, sir. No clapping. Thank you. At this time, we don't have anyone else signed up. Is anyone in this room now that would like to speak right now? Come forward. If there's anyone else, then line up behind them. But this will be the last before we go to WebEx.
Good morning, gentlemen, ladies. My name is Scott Stattler. I live at 6706 Del Prado Terrace. I'm here to echo what these people have said. I am the one that brought the photos that were admitted into evidence or whatever you have here, okay? Like John was saying, if you look at those photos, there are potholes that are two or three inches deep that are eight or nine feet long, okay? We're constantly driving through it, and John is correct. It is not a flooding problem. It is a drainage problem. On this block on Del Prado Terrace, there is a 12-inch corrugated pipe, okay? From the deterioration of the road, that pipe is hopelessly clogged. There is no way any water can go through there. Some of those photos that were brought in today were taken today. We haven't had any rain in a week, and there's still three, four, five inches of water in the street. It never goes away. Something needs to be done. It's been requested over and over, over the course of two years that I've been there. And Public Works will come out. They'll take a look. They'll stick a piece of pipe or a shovel in the drainage pipe and walk away, and nothing ever gets done. We had another neighbor that used to go to the other side on a canoe and start banging a piece of wood on the outlet of the pipe, and some water would come out. Somebody needs to get in there, even on a temporary basis, and powerjet this thing out just to get the water temporarily and possibly curb the streets and repair the streets so they don't continue to fill up. You put a 12-inch pipe there with no screen, nothing's on it. Anything and everything that floats down the street. Last week, when we had the hurricane that came by here, which turned out not to be a hurricane, there was garbage bags floating down the street. Because as cars are going down the street, the garbage cans that are out for the garbage workers get knocked over. Everything's floating down the street. Everything's going into this pipe. I mean, aside from that, you have the cane toads, which are constantly breeding in the street. That's an invasive poisonous toad. Children, pets, whatever going out can get killed. It's a breeding ground for mosquitoes, okay? Because it's not exactly saltwater. It's brackish water at this point, so mosquitoes can breed in it, okay? With mosquitoes, you have Zika virus. You have everything else that can come with it. It is, it's a safety issue. It's not a cosmetic issue. And there are many simple things that can be done to help mitigate the situation temporarily until you guys get the funding. But all it takes is the will and desire of this board, and that's what we're asking you. Just help us out a little bit here. We live here. We pay taxes. We do deserve at least the smallest bit of respect from you guys. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for WebEx?
We do. We have one person signed up for WebEx that is logged on, Jennifer Mottzinger. Okay, Ms. Mottzinger, you should be able to speak now. We should be able to hear you. If you could state your name and address for the record, please. Ms. Mottzinger, you are unmuted on our end. We cannot hear you. We still cannot hear you, ma'am.
Hello?
Oh, we have you now.
Oh, my gosh, that was crazy. Well, good morning, everybody. My name is Jennifer Mottzinger. I represent the Tampa Bay Builders Association, the people who...
Okay, Ms. Mottzinger, we cut out. We can't hear your audio.
That's weird that we heard her and then it went away.
Yeah.
It might be on her end. It's on her end, touch, nodding his head.
Can she call my phone and I put it up to the...
Did she drop off? She dropped off. She'll probably try to come back.
Can she call and put it up to the mic? Is that allowed?
Yes, we should be able to hear it on the recording.
Maybe she'll call back. In the meantime, I'm going to recognize Commissioner Mariano to answer some of this is there you.
Okay, thank you. So this will be part of my committee report.
Sorry, hang on, Jack. Okay, here we go. Okay, we're going to put you on speaker.
Okay.
Hold it up close to the speaker.
Where's the speaker on this?
It's on the bottom.
Okay. All right, speak, Jennifer.
Where there is a will, there is a way, folks. Can everybody hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, well, good morning. My name is Jennifer Mottzinger, and I represent the Tampa Bay Builders Association, the people who build the American dream of homeownership. And my address is 512 East Kennedy Boulevard in Tampa. There's no question that Pasco County has become an ideal place for many families to move for its quality of life and proximity to airports. And it seems like everybody wants to build a new home with a pool these days. And definitely, the master plan community lifestyle appeals to people at all stages of their life. So I want to take a moment and congratulate you, commissioners, because you have recognized and planned for the growth that we are experiencing now. And that is a testament to the thoughtfulness of your decisions. In the same approach, I've worked with Dan, Sally, and the staff over the last year to address the challenges that have come with the surge in demand for Pasco's development and building-related services. And I just want to take a moment and thank the staff again publicly for all their late nights, weekends, and so much dedication to maintain that level of service. I'm actually here to advocate for them this morning. The good news is the industry believes in paying fair fees for a satisfactory level of service. So you have the money to invest in new employees and resources that will help the development review process. Hopefully, that'll free up some money to invest in some drainage issues because for those poor people, my goodness, my heart goes out to you. Now, it's down to hiring new employees, though. We need to work together to ensure that good quality plans are submitted and reviewed and work together to ensure families investing their lives in Pasco have safe homes and neighborhoods. It's truly a partnership between the regulatory community and my industry. But we also must remain competitive with other areas, and that's why it's so important to hire, train, and reward good employees. I support the proposal that Sally's going to be presenting to you today. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you for your patience while we get through this tech issue.
All right, thanks, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I recognize Commissioner Mariano.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And folks, thank you all for coming out to help bring the attention to the flooding issues. I want to, before we get into Mr. Carbella and his team, they have done a phenomenal job, and this board, I think, has done a great job working with stormwater issues around this county. I mean, when I first started 16 years ago, we had people that were flooding all over the place. Today, we have, we've just passed this morning at 9:00, MSBUs for places like Magnolia Valley, Timber Oaks. There's places like Ashwood, which was a street, small little street, that the brilliance of Mike Carbella and his team solved that issue with a simple flowway. Iron Bark, Raybridge, to flood all the time, Sea Pines, two agenda items today. After acquiring two other properties, going to get to solve those issues coming up and hopefully show up here at a time. So, Mike, all this here is, you've done a phenomenal job. We still have more to do. I've been out to these areas here, and, you know, we did put one pipe in the ground that Lady mentioned, Mrs. Orchard mentioned, where we put a pipe in the ground that went out to a canal to a flowway that was there, and we put a stop valve so the water would flow back in. On a high tide situation, though, in the storm surge situation coming in, that water's coming in. It will flow out when it gets low enough, but it is a low area. Mr. Love, we're relieved. We had stormwater team fully out there taking a look at it. The city had put water and sewer in there, and they built the road really low, and it's below sea level. It's going to be tough to fix that, but we can work with the city to go make that happen. Part of the area Mrs. Orchard mentions and down that whole area, if we have our live pipes cleaned, and Mike, I think we have ours cleaned, we got to, we'll double check. But we got to work with the city on this one because they own stuff that connects with ours, et cetera. And I think this is the time to actually take a look at it. And you've heard me mention before, up along US 19, you can go up and down, and you see so many white signs with the green lettering, which means it's not county maintained. And the roads, always the worst. And I didn't want to shrink the TIF money, we have mobility fees, to shrink it down until we actually fix those things. We said we can get them done. I will tell you, this area here could be a lot better if we could get into changing those roads over. So, folks, doing a paving assessment does cost money. I think it's well worth it. So I'm going to reach out to each one of you. I'm going to go look at doing a paving assessment for the whole area. At the same time, I've always said I want to fix the drainage first. And to what level we can get to that point, it'll never be perfect with the sea level where it is and the way that thing's built, but we can make it better. And we're going to work to make it better for you. And I want to say, talking to us is great, too. And even if you're in the county, you can still talk to the city about what's going on with them so they can be encouraged to work with us. I think we need to have a joint meeting with the city of Newport Ritchie. I mean, I can work directly first with them to get started on this, but I just need to elevate this issue. And, folks, thank you for coming out to help elevate the issue higher. We've worked hard. We just did a cleanup down there. I think the cleanup went great. But I think the stormwater drainage, you guys are right. We need to fix it. People need to get out of their homes, and we need to find a way to make it better. So I'm fully supportive to try to make it better. For the lady at Philly Lane, the Highlands area is difficult because it is the basin that just comes down. And that area, especially Philly Lane, that water just comes down to the basin to try to get it out. And if you were told, and I'm not doubting you whatsoever, that we're going to get a pump out there, and I struggled with those emails, too, pushing staff to say, "Look, we've got an area that's in the county." I don't care whether it's a privately maintained road or not. If there's people that are flooding out, we should be putting a pump in there to try to help them out. And the pump could help to a certain area. So whether it be privately maintained or not, I don't think it's a factor whether we take care of it. These people are paying a stormwater fee. We should be helping them out, privately maintained road or not. We'll go and look. Matter of fact, you guys have a meeting next week? So I'm going to try to have some staff there. I'm actually going to be away. But we'll set another meeting upcoming that. But I'll try to get some of the staff folks there to actually be there at the meeting and talk about the stormwater things. And we're going to talk paving assessment, too, for down the road, and we'll set another meeting up for that. All right? So, folks, I greatly appreciate you all coming out here. It helps when the board can hear from you. This is a great board of county commissioners. We get a lot of stuff done. We're actively going it through. So I'm going to tell you, with our team, Mike Carbella, he's helped with his team as well, doing so many solutions. I know we'll get some of these things improved. May not be perfect, but we'll improve them.
Thank you, Commissioner.
A question. But can we go check that pipe, though, and see if it's blocked? And can we maybe put some kind of structure on there that keeps the trash from going through and blocking it?
Can't talk from the office.
No, no, the guy behind you is trying to...
So, let me say, so those of you had said, if you have specific things, like where the pipes are that it may be clogged, or a solution that you have, send an email to me directly. We'll get it to them, and we'll get the information going. So when we come out to speak with you and start working on this, we'll have your direct information. And I will tell you, you're coming out here with direct information helps a lot. A lot of the solutions we have came from people just like you, speaking forward to something that we're going to go work on to solve. So thank you all.
So Commissioner, to answer your question, the Public Works team is actually online and paying attention and taking notes, so we'll make sure that the maintenance concerns are looked into and addressed.
I've been out there on Olssner, and I think that's where some of the homeless camps are in that property over there. And I've seen the trash that goes into the wetlands and right across the street, and it goes into the waterways, and it's a problem. I'd like to, are there no trespassing signs on that property?
There are some, I think, that need to be done. I mean, there's actually one disaster that actually, with some family actually drove into one of those camps, drove their car there, and they burnt... into one of those camps, drove their car there and they burnt their car down on the people. They were homeless folks. They drove into the camp and those homeless people burnt down their car. It's still there right now.
I think I saw that fire one day out in the water.
So with the board's support, I think administration's here in this loud and clear, we'll go take a look closer, work with the service office, our code enforcement team, and start clearing that out even more so. And I think if we can also work together, as you've, I've mentioned a long time ago, we looked at Hudson Beach doing that roadway up there. I think Green Key, we need to go push that issue as well to make that thing a nice road going out there with a trail going out there.
Yeah.
So fully supportive of that, too.
I had just talked to Sally and Ms. Pearson here before the meeting started because I have the same issue in Holiday where we have absent land, you know, owner of land where the homeless camp is back. And it takes a lot of county resources to try and keep clearing everybody out and cleaning them up. And I think that these absentee landowners should be fined daily. And that'll get their attention when the fines start racking up because they are really causing havoc in those nearby communities. It's not fair.
Mr. Chairman, I know we got a time certain in a second here, but I know we weren't really planning on getting into this today, but a gentleman came up and talked to Commissioner Stark United a minute ago about the homeless issue. And obviously, we all, and just like the people in the audience do, we have compassion and, you know, for the people that are homeless. But we have a situation now where we have people that are actually harassing others.
Yeah, kids riding bikes.
You mentioned a burning car, being abusive, criminal acts, that's a different story. So I know it's not my district and I don't know exactly what's going on there, but I think it would behoove us to, whoever wants to, you know, take the lead on that, would be to get with Human Services, get with the Homeless Coalition, and the Sheriff's Office, and put their heads together and work as a team. We have a homeless coalition. They need to be more engaged in that situation. And if there are criminal acts taking place, they need to be arrested. Now, that's not the solution to homeless and we know that. But if there's people committing criminal acts, they need to be held accountable, no matter who they are or where they live. So that needs to be the case. So we need to get code enforcement out there, let's bring the Sheriff's Office in there, let's pull them out if they're committing these acts, get the homeless coalition involved, get Human Services involved, and let's take care of this for once and for all and be done with it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just, one thing to talk about the homeless, too. They had a program or ordinance they just passed, I think it's down at Fort Myers, a panhandling ordinance that they just went through. They say ours is weak, needs to be tweaked. So I want to go take a look at that and I'll bring that back for the attorney's office to take a look at to see if that improvement can help. Because when people that from Hudson and Beaco's Drive we were just talking about, that area right there, when someone accosted a lady, caused an accident, hurt the lady, they did a lot of clearing out from there. The panhandling part of it, I think, just promotes even more and more trouble. Whether they're in the right of ways, wherever they are, it's dangerous, it's not good in any form.
Well, you know that we banned panhandling, but the Supreme Court threw that out and said it's freedom of speech unless they're standing in the road.
Most of them are standing right in the road. So as far as like, it's not on the sidewalk they're doing it, they're in the medians, they're on the edges, they're in the right of way.
All right, let's move on. Anyone else on Webex?
Mr. Chair.
No one else is on Webex.
Okay. So we'll close public comment at this time. And now it becomes time for resolutions. Did you have something to say?
I just wanted to say, I had gone on a ride along with Chief Kason and driving down Green Key Road, I did notice there was a home and it was completely surrounded by water. They couldn't even get to their home without being able to walk through the water. And with Public Services, I applaud them on going out, working into the field, because I did go to the Rosalie Project. And they, when they were out helping and feeding the homeless, they were able to house some of those homeless people. So thank you.
All right, now it's time for resolutions. Madam Clerk, would you please read the first resolution?
Yes, Mr. Chair. If anyone is here in regards to ending opioid abuse, would you please come to the podium?
Doesn't look like you have anybody. Why don't you read by title only?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, if there's nobody here, we read by title only?
Yeah.
Resolution number 21-263, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, supporting the goals of ending opioid abuse, advancing utilization and accessibility of drug-free pain management care, and designating September 2021 as Drug-Free Pain Management Awareness Month.
Move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like say aye. Motion passed 5-0. Move on to resolution two. Is this...
Two is a time certain.
Time certain, 11.
Mark, is our, are we good? You can do the time certain. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
She's here.
Okay.
Donnelly, I don't have the resolution number two. I can't find it here.
Is that the one that just was framed?
No. It's here. It's on the bottom, sorry. I've got it, thank you. Do I talk?
Okay, ready? Resolution number 21-211, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, congratulating Doreen Packard on her retirement and commending her for 31 years of service to Pasco County. Whereas Doreen Packard began her career with Pasco County in December of 1990, and whereas Doreen initially served with the Fire Rescue Department, then on to Human Resources, where she quickly became the go-to person for sorting out and often, out the often difficult to understand policies and procedures of the personnel world, and where she played a critical role in helping establish the Pasco County Employee Wellness Centers, which have become a much-valued benefit keeping our county team members healthy and productive. And whereas Doreen was then eagerly recruited to become a key member of the Organizational Performance Management Team, where she established herself as the glue, holding together a diverse and often complex mix of programs, actions, activities, and people. And whereas she also served our community tirelessly during multiple emergency activations, ensuring our Joint Information Center was properly staffed and functioning at full capacity. And whereas Doreen has volunteered for nearly two decades assisting with the Youth Leadership Pasco Program, which each year helps identify and develop leadership skills in our Pasco County high school students. And whereas Doreen has set the standard for perseverance and a positive attitude, taking nothing and giving all, turning every interaction into lasting friendships. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, in regular session duly assembled, that said board hereby congratulates Doreen Packard on her retirement and commends her for 31 outstanding years serving Pasco County to create a better future. Done unresolved with the court present and voting this 24th day of August 2021.
Move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Mr. Chairman? Can you hear me on this mic here?
I believe she's ready to talk.
I'd like to thank you for the resolution. I've had an amazing career with Pasco County. Husband of 44 years, my daughter Heather and my son Robert. I'd like to have them come up.
Come up, that's good.
I've been blessed with my career with Pasco County. It's been amazing. I've made so many friends and family. Every team I've worked with, it's become a family and it's just been amazing. I've seen the county grow unbelievably and I'm just blessed and thankful that I have this career with Pasco County. Thank you very much. And it's been a pleasure working with Mark. Mark is an amazing leader and a mentor and I couldn't ask for a better person to work for. I've had the pleasure of working with Ben Deal, Training Manager, for over 20 years and his training team. I've worked with Tambray Lane and Media Relations and seeing that division grow unbelievably. Lisa Stinet and her customer service team are amazing. And then the Performance Development Analyst that I work with. So I've been very blessed to work with Dr. Bellis and OPM and it's just been amazing. Thank you so much.
We certainly thank you for all the service that you put in for the county and the other employees. You've set high standards for all of them to want to follow, to achieve what you've achieved in your career. And we certainly appreciate that and hope the very best for everything.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, before we come down there, we'll, and, yeah, Ms. Packard, thank you again, echoing on Chairman's statements, you know, 31 years. You have a lot of fans here. I see they're all waving in the background, right? You know, but thank you for everything you've done for the county. Again, on behalf of not just this Board of County Commissioners, but all the citizens out here, you've made Pasco County a much better place for us, all of us, to all live, work, and play. And the Wellness Center, that we're going to work on the Wellness Center, which benefits every employee here from now into the future, what a huge benefit for everyone. So, Mark, did you want to say something before we come down? As I have a feeling you do.
Just, yeah, so all the sentiment here, there's a lot of emotion behind this whole thing. We know that Doreen started with the county before there were child labor laws here in Pasco County. We could not do what we have done, and particularly in the organizational performance management group, without Doreen. Doreen has been the glue that's put this whole thing together and helped us through it. And there's certain times that people come into your life and they change not just your mind but your heart. And that's what Doreen has done for all of us. So thank you so much. And to say we'll miss you in there is a huge understatement, but, you know, awesome stuff. So thank you.
Another round of applause and let's come down.
How we doing it?
If you're comfortable, it's all covered up on you. So, okay. Sure? Wait a second for everybody. Let's share this.
Start with Ryan. We're going to go in order from Ryan to me to Vincent on the camera. Perfect, thank you.
One more.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
31 years.
Yes, sir. I've got the third resolution. Is anyone here for Moffett Cancer Center? If you would please come to the podium, thank you. Resolution number 21-264, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, commending Moffett Cancer Center and recognizing August 1st as World Lung Cancer Day. Whereas world lung, I'm sorry, whereas lung cancer is a global concern, the World Health Organization has reported that lung cancer is responsible for nearly one in five cancer deaths, 20%. Across the globe, August 1st is recognized as World Lung Cancer Day to increase awareness of lung cancer risk factors and the importance of early screening and treatment. And whereas in the United States, lung cancer makes up almost 25% of all cancer deaths and each year, more people die from lung cancer than from colon, breast, and prostate cancers combined. And whereas Moffett Cancer Center is a national leader in the prevention, treatment, and research of lung cancer, dedicated to informing and empowering people at high risk of developing lung cancer. And whereas residents and their families of the 15 counties, including Pasco County, that make up Moffett Cancer Center's catchment area, are impacted by lung cancer. And whereas smoking is the number one risk factor for lung cancer, and Pasco County has the highest percentage of residents who smoke, 23.3% among Moffett Cancer Center's catchment area counties. Other known risk factors include environmental exposures, i.e. radon gas, asbestos, second-hand smoke, history of cancer, age, and most, age, most diagnosis are among adults 65 or older. Family history, radiation at the chest area, and lung disease, i.e. chronic obstructive pulmonary disease. And whereas access to screenings and education is vital for early detection and treatment, the Lung Cancer Screening Program at Moffett Cancer Center offers low-dose CT lung screenings to persons 50 years of age or older who extensively smoke, with extensive smoke histories, and provides resources intended to decrease health disparities, including access to free tobacco treatment and smoking cessation counseling, and free annual low-dose CT lung screenings to eligible individuals. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, in session duly assembled, that said board hereby commends Moffett Cancer Center and recognizes August 1st as World Lung Cancer Day to bring awareness to the severity of lung cancer and to encourage participation in low-dose CT screening and voluntarily, involuntary activities to support tobacco cessation. Done and resolved in regular session with the court present voting this 24th day of August 2021.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. Welcome.
And, Mr. Chairman? This resolution is all about lung cancer treatment and prevention. It's so important that we recognize lung cancer treatment and prevention as anyone can be diagnosed with lung cancer, whether they're smoking and those who do not smoke or if they have been exposed to environmental factors. I would like to also say thank you to Moffett for moving to Pasco County and providing our citizens with your superior service. So thank you.
I did want to say, that's not a good place I want to be where we're the number one county for smoking. So I think we need some kind of public awareness program.
So we have Tobacco-Free Florida, so I have spoken to them yesterday, so I'm looking forward to being more involved with their board as well.
Excellent. We'll give that title to someone else.
Thank you so much. On behalf of Moffett Cancer Center and the lung cancer community, we sincerely thank Pasco County for approving this proclamation and its sponsorship and joining in the effort of raising lung cancer awareness. As the proclamation stated, lung cancer screening is extremely underutilized. In fact, in Florida, only 3.2% of individuals considered high-risk for developing lung cancer will receive their annual screening. That number really just shows the huge opportunity that we have as a community to raise awareness and how valuable this proclamation is in raising awareness to Pasco County members. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're going to present it. You want us all to come down? Okay?
Yeah.
She started. Yeah.
Collection of them.
Folks, just a little closer together, please.
Got a mask on.
Get one more.
You've got the people that counted on this side, right?
Just a halfway picture.
What's LV?
Thank you. Super Bowl.
Oh.
I'm not very good at this, so my first one was bad.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Is Michelle Crary present? If you would please come to the podium. I pronounced your last name correctly? Great, thank you. All right. Resolution number 21-265, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida congratulating Michelle Crary on her retirement and thanking her for 16 years of service to Pasco County. Whereas on March 21st, 2005, Michelle Crary began her career serving Pasco County as a Development Review Technician 1. And whereas Michelle's implemented a novel cost-saving system reducing the number of paper-based plans sets engineers were required to submit, which increased distribution speed and accelerated digitization across departments. And whereas she was recognized as Pasco's Employee of the Month in April of 2009 and Employee of the Year in 2009 in recognition of her leadership on transitioning the Planning and Development Department to Electronic Distribution Processes. And whereas on February 10th, 2014, Michelle was promoted to Development Review Technician 2. And on June 12th, 2017, she was promoted to Lead Development Review Technician, reclassified as Lead Planning and Zoning Technician. And whereas Michelle's employee evaluations in May 2013, December 2014, January and November of 2016 received exceeds standards marks. And whereas in October 2020, she received the Constellation Award for her part in Planning Development Department's Alternative Service Model during the onset of COVID-19. And whereas Michelle has received many compliments and praises from her colleagues over the years, including but not limited to Dan Mulherin, who noted her willingness to go above and beyond. Ty Mullis, who stated they were constantly, consistently impressed with Ms. Crary's outstanding customer service, positive attitude, and knowledge. Robin Krendle, who identified her as a key member in the success of Pasco County. And whereas no job was too big or too small for Michelle, even when she wore many hats, and she put in the extra hours required to make sure her job was done timely, correctly, and in a professional manner. And whereas her alter ego, Precious the Clown, has brought joy and laughter with her participation in parades and her performances, especially her Happy Birthday for Kazoo performances for Pasco County employees on their birthdays. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that the board hereby commends Michelle Crary for her 16 years of dedicated service to Pasco County and congratulating her on her retirement. Done and resolved in regular session with the Corr. President and voting the 24th day of August.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passed 5-0. Okay. Welcome.
Thank you very much. I just appreciate all the opportunities I had over the years. I'm different than Doreen. Doreen started when she was young. I started when I was old. So, you know, I wish I would have started and had 31 years. I enjoyed my time here. I do miss work already. It's difficult retiring, trying to figure out what you're going to do next. So, but...
To find a place for you.
So, yeah, you know, you go to meeting, having people need you all the time, calling you, and then all of a sudden, nobody calls you. You know, talk to your dog, you know? But anyway, thank you again for all the opportunities. I really enjoyed working here all the years, and I wish you all the best in the future with all your new developments and projects in the area. And I will miss all of you, but I'll see you too for lunch. Thank you so much.
Michelle, thank you for your service. You are a bundle of energy. I mean, some places they call it the Sunshine Lady. This is our Sunshine Lady right here, with all the great things you do for the people around you. The work that you did was always fantastic, the improvements you've helped us with, every step that we've been great. And, you know, I wish you all the best with your retirement, and maybe after a little bit of time you want to come back, we'll bring you back in too. All right? If you want. I don't have a frame for this. I'm going to get one for you. But if the board would come down and take a picture.
Okay.
And I want to take a special picture with Jody, too.
Okay. Sounds good.
My Porsche is at my driver's house.
Take you back.
That would probably include you today.
Yeah, it would. But I would like to, you know?
We might ask somebody who knows how to take it from your phone.
Maybe someone, yes, I appreciate it.
Where? Where? It doesn't matter. People pay on it.
Or lock side.
Just look here first, folks. All right. You made it a little difficult with so many, but y'all fit.
One of those.
Sure.
Right camera.
Wait, wait, wait. Can I take this?
The driver went to my house. He's in my house.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the resolutions for now. We'll have one this afternoon. So, next order bids will be our consent agenda. I have a pull sheet, and I have pulled C-18, pull and revise, C-46, withdraw, C-48, withdraw, C-52, pull and revise, C-64, withdraw, and C-70, pull and revise. There's not another.
There's that one.
That one's been removed, so we're not pulling that item.
All right, thank you.
Okay. So, the pleasure of the board on the remaining consent items.
Move approval of the remaining consent agenda.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. We move on to C-18.
Wait, wait, what about this one?
Which one? We're doing that later.
Oh.
On purpose.
Not going to accept this one, no. It's a no from me.
Okay, I understand, but we're going to do that later, so. We were talking about it before that time, so.
Good morning, Board.
Yes, sir.
Andrew Baxter, Facilities Management Director. C-18 is to pull and revise due to, there were two bonding documents that were required for this contract. Unfortunately, we loaded the same of both. This is to correct that. There's a construction bond, and then there's a performance bond. With now both of them uploaded, this was still recommended for approval.
Move to approve. Second.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. We move on to C-18.
Wait, wait, what about this one?
Which one? We're doing that later.
Oh.
On purpose.
Not going to accept this one, no. It's a no from me.
Okay, I understand, but we're going to do that later, so. We were talking about it before that time, so.
Good morning, Board.
Yes, sir.
Andrew Baxter, Facilities Management Director. C-18 is to pull and revise due to, there were two bonding documents that were required for this contract. Unfortunately, we loaded the same of both. This is to correct that. There's a construction bond, and then there's a performance bond. With now both of them uploaded, this was still recommended for approval.
Move to approve. Second.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passed 5-0. C-46, we're withdrawn. Forty-eight, withdrawn. I think the next one is 52.
Good morning. Mike Carvalho, Assistant County Administrator, Public Infrastructure. Item C-52, the incorrect budget amendment document was uploaded into the system. It's been corrected, and you have it in front of you now.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. We move on to C-64. Well, that's withdrawn. C-70.
Good morning. Louise Anderson, Parks Recreation Manager, Administration. C-70, the requisition attachment in Tyler Munus, the amount was incorrect. It's been corrected, and it is in front of you now. The amount is $139, 697.22.
Move to approve.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. We move on to C-64. Well, that's withdrawn. C-70.
Good morning. Louise Anderson, Parks Recreation Manager, Administration. C-70, the requisition attachment in Tyler Munus, the amount was incorrect. It's been corrected, and it is in front of you now. The amount is $139, 697.22.
Move to approve.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. We move on to C-18.
Wait, wait, what about this one?
Which one? We're doing that later.
Oh.
On purpose.
Not going to accept this one, no. It's a no from me.
Okay, I understand, but we're going to do that later, so. We were talking about it before that time, so.
Good morning, Board.
Yes, sir.
Andrew Baxter, Facilities Management Director. C-18 is to pull and revise due to, there were two bonding documents that were required for this contract. Unfortunately, we loaded the same of both. This is to correct that. There's a construction bond, and then there's a performance bond. With now both of them uploaded, this was still recommended for approval.
Move to approve. Second.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. C-46, we're withdrawn. Forty-eight, withdrawn. I think the next one is 52.
Good morning. Mike Carvalho, Assistant County Administrator, Public Infrastructure. Item C-52, the incorrect budget amendment document was uploaded into the system. It's been corrected, and you have it in front of you now. Move to approve.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. C-46, we're withdrawn. Forty-eight, withdrawn. I think the next one is 52.
Good morning. Mike Carvalho, Assistant County Administrator, Public Infrastructure. Item C-52, the incorrect budget amendment document was uploaded into the system. It's been corrected, and you have it in front of you now. Move to approve.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. C-46, we're withdrawn. Forty-eight, withdrawn. I think the next one is 52.
Good morning. Mike Carvalho, Assistant County Administrator, Public Infrastructure. Item C-52, the incorrect budget amendment document was uploaded into the system. It's been corrected, and you have it in front of you now.
Move to approve.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. We move on to C-64. Well, that's withdrawn. C-70.
Good morning. Louise Anderson, Parks Recreation Manager, Administration. C-70, the requisition attachment in Tyler Munus, the amount was incorrect. It's been corrected, and it is in front of you now. The amount is $139, 697.22.
Move to approve.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. We move on to C-64. Well, that's withdrawn. C-70.
Good morning. Louise Anderson, Parks Recreation Manager, Administration. C-70, the requisition attachment in Tyler Munus, the amount was incorrect. It's been corrected, and it is in front of you now. The amount is $139, 697.22.
Move to approve.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. We move on to C-64. Well, that's withdrawn. C-70.
Good morning. Louise Anderson, Parks Recreation Manager, Administration. C-70, the requisition attachment in Tyler Munus, the amount was incorrect. It's been corrected, and it is in front of you now. The amount is $139, 697.22.
Move to approve.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you.
Okay, that's end of the consent items. We move on to regular items, I believe, somewhere. Yeah, regular items?
Yes, sir. Good morning. Again, it is my pleasure to present to you for confirmation our new Solid Waste Director, Justin Rustler. Justin is a, holds a doctorate in environmental engineering from the University of Florida and is a professional engineer in the state of Florida. You've worked with him on many issues during his tenure as Assistant Director, and most recently in the past eight months as the interim director of our Solid Waste Department. During the interviewing process, we interviewed multiple candidates, cast a wide net, nationwide search, looking at advertising in Solid Waste Association, as well as other engineering avenues. And through multiple interviews, both with field staff to senior leadership, Mr. Rustler was the clear choice. He has my utmost confidence, and I recommend you confirm him as our newest Solid Waste Director to lead that department into the future.
Move to approve. Second.
I got a motion, I got a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you.
Welcome, Justin, and come forward.
Congratulations.
Let you talk.
Thank you so much. It's an honor and a privilege to serve the Board and the citizens of Pasco County, and I just want to say thank you to County Administrator Biles and Mike Carvalho. It's great to have the support of management and their guidance and leadership. So, looking forward to a long and continued career here in Pasco County.
Excellent. Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say something. Justin, so happy for you, happy for us as well, because you're very responsive every time we get ahold of you. I know we had an issue that Senator Frasano sent over, I think it was last month, and you took care of it, like, within 24 hours. And it was a constituent issue. They had gone to him first, and he brought it, obviously, to me.
That's funny.
But you're always responsive. We appreciate it, and it's great working with you, and look forward to a bright future for you. Maybe even sometime you can take his job over when he retires. I'm just teasing with you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just like a few accolades as well. Justin was a, on the ground with the boots on the ground when we cleaned out that leisure lane area, working with Mike and John Batista and company, really cleaned that up area in a tremendous way when it really needed it. And I also love the fact that when I worked on that Vision Road up in Hicks Ave, Hicks Road, how you were, like, very responsive to the group that was up there about trying to use the ash, the ash that we have in the landfills, which is great to use for the road base. So, I appreciate all your openness to go kind of get out there in the field and actually help to get things done, so. Wish you all the best.
Thanks, sir.
Welcome aboard, Justin. We certainly appreciate all you've been doing for us, but we look forward for all that that's coming in the future, so, thank you.
Doctor.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Move on to R-75.
Good morning. Joanna Cheshire, Chief of Staff, County Administration. R-75 before you is an application from Josephino Lopez to engage in the occupation of fortune teller and similar occupations. This application does not meet the relevant criteria for issuance of a permit and acquisition of an occupational license entitling the applicant to engage in the business of fortune telling, so we recommend denial.
Yeah, well, I'm going to move to accept staff's recommendation.
Second.
Okay. I got a motion in a second. All those in favor of the motion to deny? Aye?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. Move on to R-76.
I think I walked the podium to present this one. Yeah. It's only $107 million, so I figured.
Only.
So, back in March, the President signed the new American Rescue Plan Act, and part of that had a slice in there for local and state governments, of which Pasco County received, will receive over the next two years, about $107.6 million. And so, as part of that, you can see the legislative text on there. I just want to make a couple of points kind of before I get to the plan.
Uh, he has my utmost confidence and, uh, I recommend to confirm him as our newest solid waste director to lead that department into the future.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Yeah, I got a motion. I got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion passed five zero. Welcome, Justin, and come forward.
Congratulations.
Let you talk.
Thank you so much. Uh, it's an honor and a privilege to serve the board and, and the citizens of Pasco County. And I just want to say thank you to County Administrator Biles and, and Mike Kukala. Um, it, it's great to have the support of management and, and their guidance and leadership. So, looking forward to, uh, a long and continued career here in, in Pasco County.
Excellent. Ms. Chairman, I just wanted to say something. Justin, we're so happy for you, happy, happy for us as well because you're very responsive every time we get ahold of you. I know we had, I had an issue that Senator Frasano sent over, I think it was last month, and you took care of it like within twenty-four hours. And it was a constituent issue. They had gone to him first and he brought it to, obviously, to me and so you're, but you're, you're always responsive. We appreciate it and it's great working with you and look forward to a bright future for you. You, maybe even sometime you can take his job over when he retires. I'm just teasing with you.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just like a few accolades as well. Justin was a, uh, on the ground with the boots on the ground when we cleaned out that leisure lane area, uh, working with Mike and John Batista and company, uh, really cleaned that up area in a tremendous way when it really needed it. And I also love the fact that when I worked on that vision road up in Hicks Ave, Hicks Road, how you were like very responsive to the group that was up there about trying to use the ash, leachate, uh, the ash that we have in the landfills, which is great to use for the road base. So, I appreciate all your openness to go kind of get out there in the field and actually help to get things done. So, we wish you all the best.
Thanks, sir.
Welcome aboard, Justin. We certainly appreciate all you've done, been doing for us, but we, uh, look forward for the, all that that's coming in the future. So, thank you.
Doctor.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Move on to, uh, R seventy-five.
Good morning. Joanna Cheshire, Chief of Staff, County Administration. R seventy-five before you is an application from Josephino Lopez to engage in the occupation of fortune teller and similar occupations. This application does not meet the cri- the relevant criteria for issuance of a permit and acquisition of an occupational license entitling the applicant to engage in the business of fortune telling, so we recommend denial.
Yeah, well, I'm going to move to, uh, accept staff's recommendation.
Second.
Okay. I got a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion to deny? Uh, aye?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero. Move on to R seventy-six.
I think I walked the podium to present this one. But it's only a hundred and seven million dollars, so I figured.
Only.
So, um, back in March, the president signed the new American Rescue Plan Act and part of that had, uh, a slice in there for local and state governments of which Pasco County received, will receive over the next two years, about a hundred and seven point six million dollars. And so, as part of that, you can see the legislative text on there. I just want to make a couple of points kind of before I get to the plan. Uh, but one is, I think I've mentioned to you before, the, the statute itself contained about a hundred and fifty-eight words. And when Treasury was done writing guidance and rules and regulations and, uh, reporting requirements, it was about a hundred and twenty pages worth of documents we've had to go through over the last sixty days to develop the plan, uh, that kind of conforms to what we've talked about before, but wanted to kind of just, um, kind of give you a perceptive, a picture of that, to go from a hundred and fifty-eight words to a hundred and twenty pages, with more to come because they actually haven't finalized their rule yet. So, we expect probably ultimately the number of pages they write will exceed the number of words Congress actually approved in legislation for this piece of the act. So, with that said, uh, you know, we've spent a lot of time, and I know some of you have spent a lot of time on various webinars and phone calls and seeing what other jurisdictions are doing around the nation, around the state. And ultimately, um, we focused really on the revenue recovery piece and worked through the Treasury guidance using the GFOA, um, model built on the Treasury guidance to kind of project the amount of revenue the county lost due to COVID nineteen. As a result of that, the, the amount of revenue based on that model, based on that model, uh, is, it actually exceeds the amount of funding we will be getting for the United States from the American Rescue Plan. So, we've backed off of that a little bit. Uh, the, the thing about that is, and using that bucket, um, is that ultimately that there are fewer reporting requirements based on that and Treasury has asked what you plan on spending the money on, but not necessarily the same amount of reporting requirements. That said, on the plan as part of that, the rest, revenue recovery piece, several of the projects that we've listed on there to utilize that for actually would qualify under other criteria, whether it's infrastructure, COVID-related expenses and so forth. And so, as you see the plan there in front of you, we've broken it up into three buckets. The largest bucket, obviously, being the revenue replacement bucket, and under that, we've put some specific projects that we plan on allocating that money to. Treasury has said, "We would like to know what you're going to plan on spending the money on," but the criteria is a lot more flexible than under, say, the infrastructure piece or the COVID expense piece. So, we actually moved those into here because it gives us a little more flexibility. So, see there, I'm just going to walk down the list real quick. You see six items there. The Lyndrick Utility Acquisition actually would be eligible on its own. Put it under here, actually allows us to require, acquire that system that you directed us to acquire a couple of years ago with zero rate increase to the county rate pair as a whole. You know, the original plan, you bought Aqua, we were going to buy Lyndrick over the next twelve months and that would have resulted in a rate increase. Doing it this way actually eliminates the rate increase needed. The second one on there is the Wesley Chapel Library. Right now, for the next several years, the library impact fees are dedicated to the Starkey Library that just opened. And so, this builds the next library that's needed as part of their master plan in Wesley Chapel, uh, on land we already own and, and, and the fastest growing area of the county. The third one is the jail construction. As we, we're processing through the design of the jail COVID hit. Uh, we've made changes to the design to deal with infectious diseases, not just COVID, but infectious diseases as a whole. And that expense can be, uh, allocated to this because it's actually in addition to the money set aside from the general obligation bond. Talked to parks. Their number one priority from a district park perspective, now that Starkey is effectively done, and I know there's still a little, some work still to be done out there, but effectively done from a budgeting perspective. Uh, the next one on the list is VOPH Super Park. Uh, you actually have the first MPD in front of you in VOPH later today, but this will put a significant source of money out in VOPH Super Park to build a large portion of that planned park. And that's the number one priority from the Parks Master Plan. The next one is to, as we're working through the stormwater design on Maggie Valley, we've always tried to integrate parks into that and there's some money here then to put into the parks piece of that. Parallel to or even before the stormwater project's done, because this is really on the upland piece that would not have been part of the ponds anyway. And so, these are really ballfields, diamonds, triangles, or diamonds and squares to kind of help alleviate some of the, the need on the west side. And then the last one is to, uh, seed capital into the dredging fund. Uh, the board's kind of directed us to look at MSBU and an MSTU for the long-term maintenance of dredging along the coast. This would be able to seed capital into that so that once the board establishes it, there will actually be funds to go actually start work as opposed to waiting for that to accumulate funds, um, over the long term. So, that's that list, if you will. Um, in general, it adds up a little less than eight ninety-eight million. And we built some, a little flex in there just because, one, it's going to take a few years to get that done. We want to make sure that we, um, manage and, and cover some of the market conditions that are out there. The other two that I'll go through real quick is health expenditures. So, to date, and I think over the next meeting or two, you'll see a budget amendment to move money out of the General Fund Reserve into our health insurance fund. We've spent about three point four million dollars on COVID-related health insurance claims for county employees, well, every member of our health insurance, which includes some of the constitutional officers in their offices. Um, and so, we will, part of this will go dedicated to covering some of that cost. Some of that was covered by CARES, but some of this will go to cover this, in addition to any future health insurance claims, uh, over the next couple of years. And the third bucket there, if you will, covers public safety, county operations. Uh, the main one I want to talk about under that one is premium pay. Um, you know, we have talked about, you know, that, you know, the, the governor and the state legislature approved premium pay for public safety employees and teachers. And it didn't make sense for one section of our employee base to get premium pay from the state and not deal with premium pay on the rest of the employee base. We also weren't necessarily, we looked through the categories and we had some people we thought should have been eligible for premium pay from the state that didn't get it because of their criteria. And so, we, we were going to develop a premium pay plan that is different than that, that would allow them to get some premium pay. None of us nor any of the constitutional officers actually shut down and suspended operations during the COVID, during the COVID, uh, impact from the middle of March on. We continually operated, the constitutionals in the county continually operated, as opposed to some other jurisdictions that actually shut down and stopped operations while dealing with the pandemic. So, that, this is part of that, is we continue to operate. So, I'll just outline the premium pay plan real quick. Our intention is to, if you were a county employee in the year twenty twenty, so you started working for us in twenty twenty and are working for us today, then you would get premium pay on the order of five hundred dollars. Now, if you got premium pay from the state, you're not eligible for that. So, we weren't, aren't going to double pay that. But there are firefighters that started working for us in April that weren't eligible, April twenty twenty, are not eligible for the state funds, would be eligible for this. If you started working for the county in twenty twenty-one, we tiered it, so you, and are working for us today, you'd be eligible for a premium pay of two hundred and fifty dollars. So, we, we tiered it because of the issues we dealt with in twenty twenty and the issues we were dealing in twenty twenty-one. Now, that ends the date the local state of emergency ended. So, if you have come and started working for the county after the local state of emergency expired, which I believe is on the eighth of July, but I may be off a, a day or two, um, the premium pay doesn't continue past that. It's only for employees who were employed previous to that day and are still employed. So, that's pot A on premium pay. There's a plan, part B, or part B on that is, the county right now is about fifty, county employees are about fifty percent vaccinated. And as you notice, our health insurance claim exceed eleven hundred dollars per employee to date. We've only had about ten percent county employees actually test positive with COVID. So, those ten percent have actually cost, uh, three point four million dollars in COVID claims. Our firefighters are actually vaccinated at a lower rate than forty, fifty percent. We need to get that rate up into the seventy or eighty percent range. And so, one way we want to do that is, we've surveyed the counties and cities around us. Many of them are using what I will call negative incentives to encourage people to get vaccinated, i.e., there are a couple of counties in the state who basically say, "If you're not vaccinated by a certain date, you are no longer a county employee." Several counties are doing more on the, if you aren't vaccinated, then you have to test weekly. Um, and I think in some of the areas around us, you know, if you're vaccinated, you don't have to wear masks. But if you're non-vaccinated, you have to wear a mask and are subject to testing on a pretty recurring basis. Those are all what I consider negative incentives. And I would actually prefer to do a positive incentive to encourage people in a positive manner. I give them the carrot as opposed to the stick. So, what we are proposing is a five hundred dollar bonus incentive, premium pay for those of, those that have been vaccinated and are fully vaccinated by a deadline that will be set in, in November. What we're trying to do is get our rate up. Um, we, again, we are getting Delta variants, um, in county employees. We got more than twenty this week already. Those are going, so it's, it's less expensive actually operationally from budgetary perspective to pay people to get the vaccine that are county employees than it is to go pay for their health bills, health insurance bills from a county. So, when you look at it from a fiscal perspective, to incentivize them to get the vaccination so that they aren't dealing with the public health issues or the health issues further down the road, it makes good business sense in, in addition to, I think it's the right thing to do for our employees. Couple other things with that, and just from a vaccination perspective, the efficiency rating on those vaccines, the two-shot vaccines are ninety-five plus percent. In addition, if you happen to get a breakthrough case, your chances of being, becoming a hospitalization case are reduced by ninety-five plus percent. So, each step of the way, there's orders of magnitude protection for the employee, which is why we want to incentivize our employees to get in the vaccination. So, that's roughly the plan. Uh, and so, that is before you for approval to date. And so, the goal here is, we will present a report to Treasury next week that has, that the county has looked at and reviewed the plan. It is not set in stone. We can make adjustments to the plan. We have four years to spend the money. Well, December twenty-four, so effectively almost four years to spend the money. So, there can, and I would expect there would be adjustments to the plan, but we wanted to do it this way. One, to kind, so that we could let Treasury know that the board has reviewed and approved the plan. And two, that any major changes to the plan would come back to the board for additional adjustments in the future.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, thank, thank you, Dan. I think it's a, um, a great, uh, plan. And you know, when, when COVID hit, our residents were able to get outside. You know, we had the parks closed for just a little bit and then we opened them back up and the parks and the trails were slammed. And it, I think it just shows you the importance of, uh, being able to get outside and recreate, especially in Florida. There is one item that, um, is missing, I think, from the revenue replacement. And that is, um, and David Engels here, that, the, uh, the project for nineteen with the two million dollar, um, redevelopment project. David, I don't know if you want to, if you could explain it real quick and then I want to ask the
Harbors Area Redevelopment.
In the harbors, right.
Small Business Loan Program.
Yes. And, um, and this, uh, these numbers actually add up to ninety-four, not ninety-eight. So, there's, there's room to add that on there. And so, I'd like to, uh, move that we add the Harbors Redevelopment Loan Project or whatever we want to call it. What, what would be the right term for it?
That's a good enough title for me for now and we can adjust it. It was, it was part of the BPI list. It really didn't make the cut from the general fund perspective.
Yeah.
Uh, but makes sense to at least help incentivize and help leverage some of the funds that, for small business in the Harbors Plan, which is where we're having a struggle with redevelopment.
Yes. So, I'd like, thank you very much.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion passed five zero.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Um, what, what, is there enough room to add the Green Key Road into the project? With the trail?
I, I have a feeling that road's a little more than two million dollars, uh, when you include the drainage and the permitting and the wetland mitigation we're going to have to do to, to do the road. But let us go study that. Again, like I said, this is initial look. We're not even going to get the second tranche of the money until next spring. We can get a look, look at some of our estimates, see where we are, get some of the projects started and then kind of, we are, this is a plan that will be adjusted over time based on what happens in the market conditions and where we move.
Yeah, and I, I would encourage anyone to go drive that road. Let's see what it looks like.
And I think when we, when we look at it, I mean, people, the number one and two reasons people moved to Florida are, have been. COVID might have changed some of that numbers, but it was beaches and fishing. When you have an asset right in the heart of the county, going alongside there, when we approved the Wiregrass Ranch, Commissioner Wells spearheaded to go get some of the money to go for the west side, for boat ramps, et cetera, and other things. I think part of that tourist development money would even apply if we needed to, to say, "It's a good thing to add in, even if it's a trail part of the funding, whatever, to make that part of your funding source if you had a shortfall with what we're looking at here."
I think what we'll do is we'll take that as an action item. We go back and pull, build a, a cost estimate, a, a project cost estimate and kind of see the different elements that we can fund with various funds and then bring something back in the future. But I think right now, the, the tourist development loan money, the piece that was going to the west side is really committed to the anklot boat ramp reorganization and parking project. And that funds, that, that basically, I think, takes that out, if, if I'm right.
Well, Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I mean, one possibility too, I didn't, again, that, we didn't talk about this before, is, um, if there's any additional funding, it could always, I don't know if it's a possibility it can make up for some of the TDT loss revenue.
It can.
So, that's a possibility as well.
Yeah, yeah. There's, yeah, we kept it general and mainly focused on the general fund because that's really where we have the most revenue constraints. So.
So, that add, could add to the pot. Excellent.
And as we, as the projects come in and they get completed and there's maybe, um, they come in under budget than what we put, there, there may be some more that we could allocate.
And with, you know, you, you've seen the building permit numbers, you've seen what's going on in this county. You know, the revenue projections we used in the five-year budget that you will be approving in next month are very conservative because we use the state estimates after year one. And so, instead of the ten point eight percent Avalon growth that we got in twenty twenty-two, the estimate for twenty twenty-three is like seven percent. From a, because we use the state estimates past the one year, right? And so, I think you will see the continual Avalon growth in excess of what we have in our five-year program, at least over the short term, over the near term.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Thanks, sir.
Do you need, do you need a board action on that plan? Do you need a vote? Move to
I think you already made a motion.
Well, I made a motion to add the two.
We added the other.
All right, motion approved the, the plan.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ms. Chairman?
Motion passed five zero.
And I'm going to abstain from the vote just because of the dredging concept that's in there. As recommended by my county attorney and then buns of caution.
All right, so call that vote again.
He's abstaining from the vote that, and he has the right, he has the right to do that.
Okay. All right.
Do we need to call that vote again?
The vote is, the vote is, uh,
I didn't vote. Oh, you already did it. Okay.
And so, the vote is four zero.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you. Just to make sure we're good.
All right. Move on to R seventy-seven.
Mr. Chairman, this is the, um, resolution establish, establishing the Pasco County Opioid Task Force. Um, this was at your last meeting and was pulled out of the action item. We redid the resolution, um, although I think there are, there still was some need for board discussion unless the board is happy with it the way it is. Uh, we added on the member of the Pasco Alliance for Substance, uh, Prevention ASAP. Otherwise, it stayed the same, but there was some discussion amongst the board about whether or not, uh, the number one position, you wanted to put a board member on it. Um, if you don't want to put a board member on it, um, that can either be an additional county administrator seat or that position can be taken out completely, given that, um, the Pasco County Assistant County Administrator for Public Services or her, his or her designee, um, is also a member of the, of the task force. But that's, that's completely up to the board for composition.
Mr. Moore?
So, Kathy, are you, are you on it? Are you on it? You just mentioned
It's either, it's either you or a member of your staff, whichever you would.
Who do you, just out of curiosity, who do you think you might put on it? Okay. I, this is my opinion. Obviously, this is the entire board, uh, decision here. I personally don't think there should be a board member on that. I don't. Uh, I think we should leave it to professionals, people that understand this crisis, people that are in the industry, licensed mental health counselors, nurses, physicians, people, we've mentioned ASAP, those professionals, people from, you know, Bay Care. There's a number of groups we have here that under, there's a, there's a representative from the sheriff's office. I'll give you an example. My wife, um, was in charge at one time for the opioid prevention program for Pasco County School Districts. She sent, I'm still talking. And she sent on a number of committees and boards when it came to this crisis, for example. There's a lot of great professionals out there that have already started this process of decision-making process of how funds, if they ever came through, could or should be used. I mean, I can get, and I can help out with, giving you, supply those lists to you as well of, of those individuals. I just think those, that, this is going to have to come back in front of this Board of County Commissioners to make a decision on how, the final, on how these funds are going to be used. I think it's best to, for us to hear from those professionals, let them put their heads together, come and present to us and then us as a collective body make the final decision of how those dollars will be used. Again, my opinion, nobody here, and I, that's, you know, has the experience and has the degrees in this. I mean, I, if anybody, that's me, and I don't want to be on it, you know? I have more healthcare experience I actually have than anybody in, but at the same time, I don't think I should be on it as well. So, my opinion.
Okay. Mr. Starkey?
Uh, well, okay, I'll just be real quick after Christine. And I wasn't here last week or at the last board meeting, um, when, if you discussed this. But, um, two years ago, Tommy, I think you say, Isara, of the head of Bay Care, convened a group from four counties, Pasco, Pinellas, Hillsborough, and Polk. And with Advent Health, Bay, Advent Health, Bay Care, and HCA, um, Commissioner Murman, me, the sheriff, I think Dewey Mitchell was also, anyway, there's a, there was a group from every county, um, brought together to discuss the, this opioid crisis and how the region could, um, work on this together. And I think a lot of good ideas came out of that. And, um, and, and, uh, I, I don't want the county commission to lose its voice on that. I, I have no problem appointing for us to appoint someone to that committee that, if someone wants to give us, um, you know, applications and we pick someone, but I do think that, that we should be represented because it's going to be a lot of money. And, um, I just, I just think we should have our hand in it a little more.
Ms. Patrick?
Mr. Chairman, I would actually like, I know it says, "One of the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners" and I would like to be on that board. I have been involved with ASAP and Substance Exposed Newborns Committee since two thousand and twelve. So, I am knowledgeable on how much it costs for a neonatal abstinence syndrome baby and I have, am on the board for ASAP now as well. And I have been speaking to additional, um, House reps regarding this issue. So, I would like to be very involved with this situation and I have reached out to senators in the past and currently.
Can I ask you, I want to ask you a question and, um, do you feel comfortable being on that board? Giving up your right as a voting member of the Board of County Commissioners to accept the professional opinion of those that are on the board from staff or, or others? Wouldn't you be better suited for voting for what they bring to you than you are serving on the board and then not being able to vote for it?
We can't wait.
Well, she would be, she would be able to vote on, she would not have a, a conflict of, conflict of interest in terms of two eighty-six, um, when it, when it reached the board, just like any of your other committees that a, that a county that's make, make a recommendation to you.
All right. Okay, that's understandable.
Something I've been working on for the past ten years that I
Mr. Mariana?
Yeah, Ms. Chairman, I'll tell you, and, you know, as far as working on an issue and looking at an issue and directly affected as a commissioner for so many years here, watching this thing go, I mean, I think I'd be very qualified and excited to sit on this board as well. However, I think Commissioner Moore brings up a good point, uh, that we shouldn't have a Board of County Commissioners. This will be a recommending body to us. Thereby, we can make the decisions, make the tweaks. We have the flexibility to change anything we see with the parameters here. Having said that, there's something very important I think we need to know. When we had our presentation in that litigation session that we had, uh, and I think you remember, I asked the question, "How does the money get spent?" And we were pretty much told that seventy percent was going to be dictated from that list that we were shown that was on the agenda and thirty percent we had control. list that we were shown that was on the agenda, and thirty percent we had control over direct, to even reimburse ourselves in previous expenses. The way it came out, as the attorney called me back after talking to our county attorney, and he wanted to re-explain it to me, that is not the case, the way this legislation was written. We have to follow all of it through the rules that were done. Now, I gave this a lot of thought about what to do. My first reaction was, well, let's just, I'm going to make a motion to reconsider, we're going to knock it back and bring this up. Even talked to Ginger Delegale at Florida Associations and Counties, trying to put information together. But I think, as we also heard, the biggest part of the settlements, this is, this may be about three-point-five million dollars a year for the next eight years or so for us, there could be triple that of money coming up from the next settlements that are coming up. What I think we should do, just to keep this moving, get the money quicker to us, is join with it the way it's, you know, go with what we had already voted on, to go with it, but I think we need to put our voice together to say, we want the flexibility for the next settlement not to be fully dictated, but to be able to get thirty to forty percent of that money to either get our expenses back or have more control over how we want to spend it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So what, the issue that the attorney misspoke on is, the seventy-thirty is the national plan. The money that is flowing through Florida is all subject to the Florida Plan, which that detailed memorandum was provided to the commission at the last board meeting. So it all, everything that is coming into Florida is going to flow through the Florida Plan, and that's going to be the criteria which, which money is going to be delegated to the, to the local governments. The issue really here is, can you qualify as a qualified county, which currently we are not? We are, have the significant enough population to qualify, but you have to put these other pieces in place, one of which is being the task force resolution. Unless the Attorney General changes the Florida Plan for future settlements, I think you're going to be bound by the Florida Plan as it exists today.
But if the legislature changed the law-
Legislature, if the legislature did something different and, and overrode the memorandum of understanding that the Attorney General's office has put out, that, then all bets are off, yes.
Okay, so we'd have to go legislatively or get the Attorney General to change what she wants? I think, from what I've heard, what we've heard, that she's probably going to be locked into her position to this point.
I just wanted to make it clear that-
No, I'm glad you are.
That it, that it, until that plan changes either legislatively or otherwise, it's all going to flow through it.
Right.
And, and so any subsequent settlement is going to flow through it as well.
Right, and like I said, part of the public discussion that we can have, and that gets out there, is that seventy-thirty split, like the rest of the nation is getting, we're bound under different terms, and I don't think that's right. We put our taxpayer money into different things, and if this has so much money into it down the road, which we don't know, that I may just be blowing money on things that I don't need to, just because I got to spend it on something. I'd rather make sure we have the option to do more with the national plan does. If we have to go through our legislative delegation to go push that forward, I think we're better off looking for local control, at least for the last chunks that are coming up. I'm happy to get this thing going. I think what they put in there is really good. I think it was well thought out. I just wanted to have some of the control so we can reimburse our own expenses.
I don't understand the not reimbursing the citizens of Pasco for the expenses they put out.
Exactly, because it's damages. When you go sue, you sue for damages, that means you're going to get made whole again. I want to get made whole. I mean, the people from Green Key, if they weren't going through that situation, would I have more money to go put into that situation? So all those things that we've had to skip and hold back on is hurting us. So if the board's comfortable, I won't reconsider, I won't move to reconsider, we'll just make a push, though united we have to be, to that we want to go look at the future split to be along the national plan of the seventy-thirty.
Well, I don't know what you're talking about reconsider. Did you make a vote that-
Yes.
We voted, yes.
They voted to approve the, the, the board approved the memorandum of understanding with the Attorney General at the last meeting.
Okay.
The piece that was pulled out of that approval was this resolution, because you had expressed an interest in that, in-
Yeah.
-what the membership was going to be, and Commissioner Moore had a concern about a board member being on it, and so we moved the resolution. To give you all more time to think about it, we moved the resolution, we pulled the resolution out and moved it to this bill.
Okay, so, listen, if Commissioner Fitzpatrick wants to do, be on there, I'm okay with that. My, my plate is very, very full, and when you get, when your plate's too full, everything's, everything you're working on gets, doesn't get done well. Well, I don't, Commissioner Moore doesn't think we need anyone on there?
I don't think a commissioner should be on there. They're going to bring this back to us. I think we need to step back, like Commissioner Mariano said a minute ago, let that committee bring the recommendations. We need to have professionals in this industry, and I appreciate your advocacy. I was administrator for a very large healthcare firm. I had patients with opioid addiction, and we, and we had nurses that treated them. Being honest, I mean, we're knowledgeable, anybody up here on this issue. I still don't think I should be on it. I don't think anybody, any commissioner should be on it. We need to leave it to the nurses, the doctors, the licensed mental health counselors, the psychiatrists, the psychologists, somebody from the sheriff's office, because they have somebody that's dedicated to this issue, probably somebody from fire rescue as well, that treat this on a regular basis and deal with people on a regular basis. Let them bring this back to us, and then we'll make the decisions from there. Take that, let's separate ourselves from this. So they bring us a recommendation. Staff has great people-
Fact of the committee, or?
Kathy has a great, great team members as well, that can represent the county, that engage in this on a daily basis, seven days a week.
Well, these are going to be public meetings with the task force, so I guess you want to attend. You can go.
Yeah. It can be in attendance.
And have your voice-
There's no conflict of interest. There's a lot of recommendations that I have for this.
That's, and that's when we make it here on the dais. So if they bring something back and you think they're not making the right decision, or you don't agree with their decision, you as a board member, as well as the other four members, can go against that recommendation. Recommending the board on an issue, when you're part of the board, whether it be any of us, not you, any of us, I don't agree with, let the people that do this for a living be on that committee. Adamant about that.
If there is no conflict of interest, I am very confident I would-
I make a motion that no commissioner be on this committee, leave it to our team to find the professionals that should make up this committee.
Mr. Stark?
Commissioner? Mr. Chairman, so, that's fine. In that case, you would be, are you deleting number one from the resolution? I'm trying to get action-
Go ahead, read off number one, Mr. Stark.
One member of the Board of, Pasco County Board of County Commissioners are in the alternate Pasco County Administrator or his designee. Do you want to leave the Administrator or his designee in that slot? Do you want to, do you want-
We need Kathy, somebody from Kathy's-
She's another, she's got another slot lower.
Okay, delete number one, delete the Administrator, delete a commission member.
Okay. So we'll, we'll take, we'll take number one off, off the agenda. Is there any other changes in membership to this committee that?
Before we get to that, I just wanted to settle that point first, just like Commissioner Starky did on the previous edition for the redevelopment. So I just want to make, I want to make it that squared away first.
Yes, take, take a vote on that motion.
I've got a motion by Commissioner Moore, and a second by Commissioner Mariano, that not-
To delete number one.
Delete number one.
Delete number one, no, no commissioner be on that committee.
Is there a standard list that all the counties have of members of who is on the board?
No.
So I have a motion in a second. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 All opposed, like side?
Nay.
There was a motion passed four-one.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
And Commissioner Moore, I'm glad you brought up the idea about, I thought someone from Fire EMS should be on there as well, so I think that should be put in there to some, some level. Fire, Fire EMS.
Oh, yeah.
Whether it be chief or his designee, I think that should be put on there.
So what's number two?
The number two is the superintendent of schools, or his or her designee. Number three is the Pasco County Sheriff, or his, his or her designee. Number four is the Pasco Assistant County Administrator for Public Services Branch, or his or her designee. Number five is one representative of either of the two counties municipalities as defined in the proposed MOU, and we've gone, there, in, in Pasco, there are two cities that qualify. It would be Newport Ritchie and Zephyr Hills, and so they would alternate on this committee. Number six is the Director of the Florida Department of Health, Pasco County, or his or her designee. Number seven is a person with subject matter expertise in public health or addiction, who is employed by a provider of opioid-related services in Pasco County, who is nominated to the task force by the county administrator, or appointed by, and appointed by the Board of County Commissioners. Number eight is a person with subject matter expertise in public health or addiction, who is employed by a hospital system operating in Pasco County, who is nominated by, to the task force by the county administrator, or appointed by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners. Number nine is the Chief Judge of the Sixth Judicial Circuit, or his or her designee. Number ten is the representative of ASAP.
Mr. Chairman?
Ladies and gentlemen, yes, for Mr. Mariano?
I would like us to add in, I mean, I know we were saying the words employed by, for the health positions, but I think it'd be a wise thing to have someone who may be retired from it, that doesn't have to be employed, that could be in the position, just to get that extra medical benefit where someone is outside the realm of the medical world's employee. I want to get a retired-
Add another position?
Add, add another position. That'll give us eleven anyway.
Add another position.
Add another position, that'll, if we do that, that retired person-
What kind of background?
Definitely a medical background to some degree that fits in one of these categories.
Okay. Do you want to use the same criteria, public health or addiction?
Yes, that's fine.
The two, the two have.
Motion on that? Our motion for-
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, yeah, I think that's good, because the sheriff's office has Captain Roach, she's, this is what she does, opioid, deals with opioid addiction, and the school system has a registered nurse that runs an opioid education program, which my wife used to be in that position herself, so I know they have that position. And that's, and that's a grant that comes through the Health, Department of Health, and they give that grant to also the Pasco County School System and the Pasco County's Sheriff's Office as well. So another, there's a good fit.
And one other point of discussion, on the settlement where it's, now it's going to be six members, will we constitute the quorum? But as far as like who becomes the chair, I think it probably should start off with the county administrator's public services position to start. From there, I don't mind if it switches around wherever it's got to switch to, you know, if, if, you might have a really strong board member from the hospital that seems to want to take control, or can, or whatever. I mean, I'm okay with the board selecting who they want after that, after the initial point of the first year goes through. So I don't know if you want to make that change or not.
There you go. Sounds good to me. Make your motion.
All right, so I'll add for a retired person to join the board for the eleventh position, changing the quorum to six, and for the first year, it'll be the public administrator, or their appointee from public services to be the first chairman, and after that, the chairman positions be elected by the group itself.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, like side? Motion passed five-zero.
Can I get another motion to add a fire rescue or EMS, or the fire chief or his designee, and the retired person?
So moved?
Second.
And motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No, put it at eleven.
Motion passed five-zero.
Thank you, Mr. County Attorney.
And with those changes, are you in favor of adopting the resolution?
I'm with.
Second?
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed five-zero.
We will make those changes and deliver it to board records.
Move on to R seventy-eight?
No, no, it's, it's lunchtime.
Well.
No, it's-
We have a closing.
It's actually after lunchtime, I do have, so.
Yeah. Wait, that's a thirty-minute, it's break time.
We will recess this meeting at this time, and we'll rejoin the meeting at one-thirty.